And good evening and welcome to the October 3rd meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Commissioner Garrison, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge. Before we begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Turley, would you call the roll, please?
Let the record show that all the commissioners are present except for Commissioner Kramer.
Okay.
And student commissioners are here. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Kramer is excused. Commissioners, the next thing on your agenda is the approval of the minutes of the September 19th meeting. I understand our voting display for the big screen up here is not working tonight, so when we cast our votes, we will do it by hand. So, any changes to the minutes of September 19th? If not, can we hear a motion to approve? Okay. Commissioner Jackal has moved that we... The microphone system still works, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So, Steph... Commissioner Jackal?
I move we approve the minutes of the previous meeting, September 19th minutes.
Okay, it's Commissioner Garrison.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the September 19th minutes. All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously by the members present. Any agenda changes, Mr. Conley or Ms. Chow?
No agenda changes this evening, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is a chance for members of the public to address the commission on things that are not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker slips requesting to speak, so seeing none, no one else, we'll move on to our first public hearing. This is... Our first public hearing is amendments to the Development Code for the City of Vista. Mr. Conley?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This initially began as a change to the code to address the accessory dwelling unit requirements that the state's imposed. We call it our second unit, which is also included. But at the start of that, I decided I'd go around and talk to the different departments and see if there were other changes that might be warranted, and as you can see, it's produced quite a few. So, there's a lot of different things that we wanted to cover. We're going to try to do this on an annual basis so that we review it annually and make small adjustments. But there's a number of small things that we're trying to capture in one code amendment, so I'll go through them individually. Again, to streamline everything, we're putting them together. If there's anything specific here that the commission wants to discuss and act on separately, we can certainly pull it out tonight at your direction. Any recommendation that moves forward from here will go to the City Council for final consideration, most likely later this month or early in November. So, just to walk through the specific changes that are being recommended, a couple of changes to the grading and erosion control ordinance in Chapter 1756. There are two sections that have some small typos which require revisions as well as a citation, and so those are the first small changes to that chapter. Chapter 1802 is the zoning code, or Chapter 18. There are multiple sections in here proposed for revisions, the first being under the definitions accessory buildings. This is the section that we regulate accessory structures on residential properties, and we determine size based on a measurement in the code right now of no greater than 50% of the size of the main unit. We run into some problems with that where people want to build a barn or a larger accessory structure that might be allowed by the zoning, but this rule prohibits them from doing. So, we've included an exemption at the discretion of the city planner to allow for uses like barns that would be allowed by right in the zone they're located and would not be habitable. So, it's typically for storage and things like that. And so, we're asking for some consideration of that change to allow us to better regulate those types of structures on residential lots. The next change is related to common usable open space. We have a definition in our code that's somewhat vague. We've had some issues particularly with multifamily residential projects trying to cram everything in to allow it to be included with their common usable open space, including sidewalks and paved areas and stormwater basins, et cetera. So, we've just added some language to clarify that it's intended to be purely for recreational use and what that constitutes. The next is related to roosters. This is a common complaint we get from our code enforcement division, believe it or not. We have a number of complaints in small residential lot areas from roosters because of the noise they make particularly early in the morning. We're proposing... Right now, there's a definition of poultry in each of those smaller zones that allows for hens, chickens, et cetera. We're proposing to clarify that roosters are excluded from that definition, and then we'd be modifying the A1 zone, which is the one acre minimum lot size, to allow up to two roosters per lot. That's our general agricultural zone that allows a heavier animal usage, and based on the one acre size, we don't think it'll be much of a problem. But in the smaller lot areas, half acre and lower, they would be prohibited. If someone has them today and they can document that with the planning staff, then they would have a legal non-conforming use that would be able to exist for the life of the rooster, and then it would be deemed no longer permitted. Okay, I have a few slides here on second units. These are accessory dwelling units as determined by the state. We call them second units. We propose adding some definitions, removing discretionary approval, adjusting setbacks, and modifying parking, all in accordance with the state law, and I'll cover those individually. So, second units are allowed right now in the R1, E1, and A1 zones. That's 10,000 square feet and larger. Right now, it requires a plot plan which goes through a discretionary approval process with the planning department to determine setbacks, size, architectural review, et cetera. The state's rules limit us from any discretionary approval, and they must be approved ministerially, meaning they have to be issued a building permit without any planning approval. So, we're removing the discretionary planning approval requirement, but we'd be looking for those requirements over the counter as part of the building plan approval. We added some definitions to clarify what constitutes a second unit. There's attached and detached units, as well as second units that can fit within the existing space of an existing structure. So, in the residential zones that we regulate, that being the R1, E1, and A1 zones, we can allow attached or detached second units up to a certain size, but in any residential zone, someone could build an accessory unit as long as it fits within the confines of the existing structure. So, you can rearrange the interior space to accommodate a second unit in any residential zone, and that's clarified with the definitions. The setback requirements are also modified to reflect the changes in state law. There's no setbacks for the conversion of a legally permitted garage that was legally permitted as of January 1st of this year. There's five feet side and rear yard setbacks for garages that are... I'm sorry, for units that are built above a legally permitted garage. Otherwise, the second unit has to follow the setbacks within the zone that it's located that would apply to the main unit. The parking requirements are also modified, again, in accordance with the state's requirements. We're limited to allowing only one additional parking space or requiring only one additional space for a second unit, and it can be a tandem space. Our current code requires one space, but it doesn't specify whether or not tandem's permitted. There's no additional parking if the second unit is located within a half mile of a sprinter station, which we identified as a passenger rail station in the code. And the replacement parking for converted garage space still has to be provided onsite, but it does not have to be covered parking, so it can be in any arrangement. So, right now, a single-family home has to have two cars in an enclosed garage and two cars in the driveway. If you convert that legally permitted garage, you still have to provide those four spaces plus the one additional space for the second unit, but it can be in any configuration on the lot. It doesn't have to be two covered and three uncovered. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Regarding the replacement parking, you say it can be in any configuration, but are the setbacks still acknowledged? They don't... The parking doesn't intrude on the setback spaces, is what I'm asking.
In a residential zone, there are setbacks for the structure, but not for the parking spaces, so they could still park within the front setback. There are some limitations as to where they can park. In other words, they can't park on their grass or on other landscaped areas. There's a lot coverage allowance of 60%, so you can't cover more than 60% of your lot with concrete, and those are the kind of ways we manage where they put parking in their front yard, but they do have some flexibility in terms of adding driveway space to accommodate those five spaces if needed.
Okay, thank you.
There are standards in our current code regarding architectural style to match the main unit. Those are being eliminated. The state tells us there are certain unit types that we have to allow for, and in an effort to try to remove some what I consider to be arbitrary rules that are difficult to enforce, we prefer just to handle it through the building permit process. We certainly continue to strive to make them look like the main unit, but it cannot be an absolute requirement. And then finally, we currently have exaction requirements for second units where if there are no street improvements in front of the home, at the time the second unit is built, those street improvements are triggered. That's a significantly burdensome requirement financially and limits most people from doing it. The state specifically identified that we can charge fees for those units, but we cannot require exactions as we would for a single-family home, and so we're changing that requirement. We still collect all of the development impact fees. And that does it for second units. Onto later chapters of the zoning code, Chapter 1835, the mixed-use zone. We currently do not allow single-family homes in the mixed-use zone. We have an allowance for them through a minor use permit process, which we've found to not be very useful. There are a number of older single-family homes in the mixed-use zone that were there at the time the zoning was adopted, and it seems like it's a reasonable use to continue to allow for in that zone, so we've changed that to identify it as a permitted use and remove the minor use allowance for it. In Chapter 1838, the commercial C1 zone, there is currently a height limit of 35 feet. In the other C zones, C2, C3, and M1 zones, it says 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less, and so we're going to add that language back in there so that it's clear that it's limited to two stories. We've had some commercial applicants propose three stories at 35 feet, which we never intended that to accommodate. In the sign ordinance, Chapter 1852, signs on private property, the Economic Development Department asked us to amend the areas that allow for freeway-oriented pole signs to include the future automotive dealership that's being processed right now. It's shown in the location in the red here on the right-hand side of the slide includes the areas along West Vista Way and Vista Village Drive between Valencia and... I'm not sure, that other road there on the east side, near the Vista Village Shopping Center. And so, that's not included in the current areas that allow for freeway-oriented pole signs. We're proposing to amend that district so that it would be permitted a pole sign. That would still come before the planning commission as part of those discretionary entitlements, but it would give them that allowance. Chapter 1854, off-street parking and loading, there's a typo in the parking dimension explanation. It doesn't change our dimensions of 9 by 19, but we will correct the typo. In 1858, we're going to include the MU zone in areas that allow home occupations. Those are all residential zones. Someone can do a business out of their home. It does not include the MU zone because when we adopted it, we excluded that from that revision, so we're going back and correcting that. 1858-550 is a minimum residential building area. This is minimum unit sizes that were adopted when we adopted the county's ordinance back in the 60s. In the current environment, we feel like the market should drive what unit sizes should be. We typically have developments that ask for smaller unit sizes than what our code allows for, and it creates a lot of difficulty in processing development applications. The staff's perspective in this area is that if someone's willing to buy or lease or rent a smaller unit, the city shouldn't be dictating what size that unit should be, and it should be determined by market forces, but that's the staff recommendation that's at the planning commission's discretion. Chapter 1860, condominium housing, we're revising the zoning categories to reflect current zones. It had the old R2, 3, and 4 zones reference. We're simply revising that to reflect our current zoning. 1866, under special land uses, this is the requirement for a minor use permit. Right now, it notes that it expires after 30 days if not specified in the permit. We've issued a lot of permits that don't specify a timeframe, so we prefer not to have expiration of multiple use permits that we've historically issued, and so we're proposing to remove that limitation and identify that they would expire upon any term identified in the permit. Otherwise, they're good for the term of the land. Finally, on Chapter 1890, the residential density bonus ordinance, there's state law that passed last year that requires affordability period to be increased from 30 years to 55 years, and so we're correcting that as well with our code amendment. And so, I believe that completes all of the summary of the amendments. The staff's recommending that the planning commission recommend council approval of these changes, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, questions of Mr. Conley? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Conley, on the elimination of the minimum square footages for residential buildings, was there any consideration given to just reducing some of these square footages as opposed to eliminating the minimums completely?
We could certainly do that. There was no consideration given to that, but we would be happy to do that. It's extremely difficult on the staff's side to identify what should constitute a minimum unit size. There's a lot of people that are happy living in much smaller units now, which was not really much of a phenomenon when this was written. So, it's, like I said, it was difficult from the staff's side to make a recommendation as to what that should be, but we could certainly entertain that and come back with something if you wanted to look at that.
Okay, I was just kind of curious as to, you know, the types of requests you were getting, were they, you know, half of what these are, or did they...
No, they're generally within 200, 300 feet of what these numbers are typically. They're not that far off.
Well, that's why I'm curious as to maybe why not make a straight across percentage reduction instead of an elimination, but, I mean, I can see some value in having a minimum, but I can also see some, you know, does the... Does the agency really need to be involved in that? Also, I see both points, but... So, I just want to kind of get a discussion on it. Thanks.
Yeah, there's been... There've been applications before us where there are... There's a variance involved because they were three square feet short of what the requirement is, you know? My thought was that somebody should have sat down and read the rules first before they designed the units, or we were giving... Getting units that are off the shelf and they're already designed. So, I understand Mr. Conley's point that the market ought to decide what size units, but I'm going to be curious to see what happens if this goes ahead, and if it's too small and people don't want to live in it, you know, what do we end up with with something that's built that nobody wants? So, anyway, I agree with you. I can see it on both sides, so... Commissioner Garrison?
Yes, Mr. Conley. I have a question on 1858-550. The term "determined by the market," what does that mean? The developer can decide what size they want to develop and say, "Well, the market demands."
Exactly. I mean, the developer is building a product that they need to sell or rent or lease. They're going to determine what they think they can sell or rent or lease and make money on. They're much better at determining that than we are, in our opinion. This is an ordinance that makes it quite difficult on the planning side because what frankly happens is they don't read... This section of the code is buried in some arcane section of our code that's difficult to find, so they go through a planning process where they design an entire project, and they submit it to staff, and we review all the setbacks and the building architecture, and it looks wonderful, and then we get down to the floor plan, and we realize that all of their floor plans don't match what our minimum unit sizes are. And then you tell them to go back and redesign their project. They're not going to do that. They're just going to move forward and ask the planning commission to allow variance from the minimum unit sizes through the site plan approval process, which almost every multifamily project that's come before you has asked for. So, our opinion is the market should decide what those minimum unit sizes are. We're certainly in favor of looking at reduced unit sizes, but what we're finding is these are really too large for the current market, and they're causing some problems with how we're processing applications.
I guess it's... My concern is the other extreme.
Sure.
Somebody comes in and, you know, with a lot that will accommodate 500 square feet, and they say that's what the market demands. So, how do you handle that? I mean, if you have a property next to you, you have a, you know, acre lot, and there's a 5,000-square-foot or 1,000-square-foot lot next to you, and the developer says, "I want to build a 100-square-foot house on that because that's what the market demands." How do you balance that as far as the neighbors?
Well, honestly, my opinion is if the developer wants to build a 100-square-foot house, and he can sell to someone who's going to buy it and be happy living in a 100-square-foot house, then that's fine with us.
Okay.
Aren't there minimum sizes, though, for a bedroom? Code...
There are minimum sizes for a bedroom in the building code. Yeah, they'd obviously still have to comply with the minimum requirements of the building code based on square footage for human habitation, based on your occupancy, and there are certain calculations that have to be met that dictates...
Right.
...fire sprinklers and exiting and all those requirements. So, we could certainly determine what those are. If you'd like to see what those are, they're much lower than these.
Yeah.
Maybe it's worth pulling this out and bringing it back and having a separate conversation.
For a bedroom, there's minimum square footage. For a bathroom, you can only get so much into a little spot, but there can still be a bathroom. Kitchen, there's really no minimum size.
What about accessible units?
Well, you have to have a main... If I understand correctly, the policy is the... You have to have a main residence before you can do an accessory structure.
Oh, I mean, accessible. I'm sorry.
Accessibility?
Accessibility. In the bathroom for a wheelchair?
No.
No?
For a single-family home, there are no regulations. You can have a two-foot wide door going into a bedroom, going into a bathroom. You have to have egress out of a sleeping area, but that's just door and window sizes.
Why don't you let me pull this out, and I'll do a little more research. I can talk to our building official about what those minimums are. I'll look at some of the surrounding jurisdictions to see what their limitations are, and we can have a separate discussion on this at a future meeting, if that's okay.
That would be good. Thanks.
Very good. Was that your comment? Okay. Commissioner Bill?
Thank you. On top of pulling this out and looking at surrounding jurisdictions, I would also throw in that it would be better to have a minimum in case regulations come down from the state that require us to allow approval or approve certain types of dwellings. I think we've seen that a couple of times where there's either minimums or certain standards where we don't have as much of a choice or flexibility, so I would rather have some minimum standard in place, whatever that standard is, and I'd rather leave that up to a little more research, surrounding jurisdictions, something that is in common with our area rather than have nothing. That's my two cents on that. Otherwise, I'm fine with the rest of this.
You bet.
For a one-bedroom guest house, you need 400 to 500 square feet. If you go with a two-bedroom, you're going to want at least 650. You could squeeze it into 600 feet, but it's really tight. And thinking about other bedrooms on the other project that we are going to be looking at this evening, there is a den that works really great with a door, and it can be converted to a bedroom. So, those are some of the... Those are some of the games that can be played with the definition of space, the names of spaces. Not in the City of Vista, but in other agencies, I will change the name of a room to make it code compliant, because that's what we can do, so...
Yeah, so let's have a code as opposed to not have a room even if it's a really low
Mr. Conley, under the definition of poultry, I have several people in my neighborhood who have peacocks, and they can be quite loud. Does that fall under PFAL, or... I'm not sure.
I believe a peacock is... Falls under PFAL, yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. This is a public hearing. I have no speaker slips. Is there anyone in the public, in the audience, that would like to address the commission on any of the items that Mr. Conley has covered? Seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner's discussion. Stephanie, did you want to make a motion?
In that case, I move that we approve... Or we adopt Resolution 2017-NEXT recommending the City Council approval of amendments to Title 17 and 18 of the Development Code to update various grading and zoning regulations with the exception of Section 1858-50, minimum residential building area, which will be pulled out and brought back for further discussion.
Thank you.
Very good. Do we have a second? Commissioner Carroll?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Commissioners, it's been moved in second that we adopt the resolution recommending approval to the council excluding the minimum residential building area. All in favor, vote by raising your right arm. There we go. And it's unanimous of the members present. Very good. All right. The next item on our agenda is not a public hearing. It is an early design review. Are they public hearings? No, they're not. Okay. This is an opportunity for the people that are proposing the Terracina Way Apartments to come before the commission, make a presentation on their early design review. This application has not been reviewed by city staff or other departments. They're coming to the commission early in the application process to get our input on their design. So, Mr. Russler, would you lead us through Terracina Apartments, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the planning commission. The item before you tonight is an early design review for the Terracina Apartments. The application number is P17-0348. As Chairman Rosler was describing the process, I was going to go through a quick overview of the early design review. The early design review provides the opportunity for the planning commission to have direct communication with the applicant in terms of reviewing the architectural style, design, and so forth of a preliminary proposal for a project. The proposal has not been routed to city staff. It has not been reviewed by city staff as well. The applicant will be available to answer any questions in regards to the design or the thought process behind the project itself, and there will be no formal voter action associated with the early design review. Staff has received a preliminary proposal to demolish an existing duplex, retain an existing duplex, as well as construct an eight-unit apartment building on a .3-acre site. The site's located on the west side of Terracina Way, north Vista Village Drive, and the site currently maintains two duplexes. On the right side of this slide, there's an aerial identifying the subject site, which is .3 acres. It's one legal lot, and it maintains two duplexes. There's a photograph on the lower left-hand corner of this slide that... There's a photograph of the site identifying the two duplexes. Surrounding land uses include single-family homes to the east, an apartment building to the north, single-family residences to the west, as well as an apartment building to the south. The general plan land use designation for the site is mixed-use, which allows for a maximum density of 40 dwelling units per acre. The zoning of the site is downtown Vista-specific plan. The site is actually located within the transit planning district within that specific plan, and that actual district would allow a maximum of 400... plan, and that actual district would allow a maximum of four stories and a density of up to 40 dwelling units per acre. The project would require a site development plan, secret review, as well as landscape review. Staff does note that this project would be going before the zoning administrator rather than the planning commission. Residential projects with 10 units or less are reviewed at the zoning administrator level, so tonight, the early design review will provide that opportunity for the planning commission to, to review this as a preliminary stage, but ultimately, the entitlement would be at the zoning administrator level. The project would include, again, retaining an existing duplex, demolish of an existing duplex, as well as constructing an eight-unit apartment building on a .3-acre site. The proposed eight-unit building would be three stories in height, maintaining covered parking on the first level. The maximum height of that building proposed is 36 foot 3 inches. The proposed density for the site, including the existing duplex and the eight-unit apartment building, would be a total of 33.3 dwelling units per acre. The conceptual site plan indicates, again, retaining an existing duplex and, and constructing a new eight-unit apartment building along the northerly edge of the site. In terms of parking, the downtown Vista specific plan requires 1.25 parking spaces for one-bedroom units, and with all 10 of these units being one-bedroom, the total required parking spaces is 13, and the site plan indicates 13 parking spaces would be provided. In terms of site amenities, the, the site plan has been designed to maintain a small barbecue area between the two buildings, as well as some passive open space areas. The exterior of the proposed building would exhibit a exterior, or a stucco exterior finish enhanced with wood siding, as well as wrought iron enhancements and wrought iron railings around the, the decks on the exterior of the building. The roof would be gable-style roof with asphalt shingle roofing. Floor plans include unit sizes ranging from 522 square feet up to 500, or 756 square feet, and each unit would be one-bedroom. Staff is recommending the planning commission provide the applicant with some discussion and suggestion regarding the design of this project. The applicant owner, Rosie Cooper, is here to provide the planning commission with a brief presentation, and she'll also be available to answer any questions. That concludes my report, and I'm also here to answer any questions the planning commission might have. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Reesler? Okay. Ms. Cooper?
Forward the slides. I would point in this direction, right over here. This direction? Okay. Thank you for having me here tonight. First off, wanted to thank Michael Russler, the planning staff, the building staff, and the engineering staff for assisting me through the pre-application and this design review process. Their feedback has been timely and very helpful in developing what I hope will be a successful project. I'm the owner at 150 Terracina Way. So for reference, Michael already covered this, but our site is located here on Terracina Way. We're within the downtown Vista specific plan, and specifically, we're within the transit district. There's two existing duplex on sites, each containing two one-bedroom units. So as I said, we're within the downtown Vista specific plan. One of the guiding principles of the specific plan is smart growth. Our project will promote a lively, walkable, mixed-use downtown environment as it's within close proximity to nearby rail and bus transit. We're .2 miles from the Vista Transit Center, which equates to less than a four-minute Here's our existing site plan that you guys have already seen. So here's the one existing duplex on the north that we intend to demolish and replace with our eight-plex building, and then this existing duplex down here on the south, we intend to retain and renovate. Currently, you access from Terracina Way on this driveway here. Access will remain in a similar location with the new development. Working from the access along Terracina Way, this is our new site plan, so you'll come up Terracina Way. We've provided for a 30-foot access easement. This part of Terracina Way is actually a private street. Our, our dedicating this 30-foot easement will bring my half of Terracina Way to the final end state. So we're, we're dedicating 30 feet that, to the middle of the road, which includes the road and then the associated sidewalk, which will bring this portion of the street to its final end state. You'll access the property again here from Terracina Way, and then we have seven uncovered parking stalls here and six covered parking stalls in the ground floor of the new eight-plex. This duplex here will remain and be renovated, and then this whole thing is eight, my eight-plex, that's in a three-story structure. Referencing the City of Vista Design Guidelines for Amenities, Guideline 30 requires attractive, centrally-located, common open space with functional amenities for your residents, so we're providing, as Michael referenced, a barbecue area here in the middle of the site for use by my residents. Just walking you through level one and two of my new eight-plex here, we have the six covered parking stalls here that sit at the north end of the site. To access the two ground floor units, you'll walk through the courtyard and access them here. To get up to the second floor, you'll use this internal stairwell and come up to this exterior corridor where you'll access the four units on the second floor here. You'll see as, as we're putting the building together, we're getting some wall articulations through, through some bumpouts and through our balconies here, and that's City of Vista Design Guideline number 21. We are one of those developers that have come to you with units that do not conform to your code, so I'm working with my architect to increase our unit size to meet the minimum square footage for a one-bedroom unit, and as we go through that process, my building will become even, it will get even more articulation and become even more interesting. City of Vista Design Guideline 33 for amenities requires laundry hookups in all unit, and you'll see I have laundry hookups in each of my units here. And you'll see I do have a laundry room located here, and that's for use by my existing units. They don't have laundry hookups, so I've planned for laundry hookups here in the event that during renovation, I can't fit laundry into the current units. This is the third floor, which you'll, again, will access from this internal stairwell here, and then you'll access through this external corridor and enter here. I have balconies on this end. That's my private open space for those units, and then up here, which provide for further articulation of the building. And as we work to increase the square footage of our one-bedroom units in order to meet your minimum unit size, you'll most likely see more living space on this third floor Wanted to reference in my elevations here, Design Guideline 22, the City of Vista Design Guidelines for Multifamily recommends that primary entries be designated as focal points. So you'll see here, we've utilized our wood siding to designate focal points for our primary entries of the buildings. And then colored, you'll see my colored elevations here. We tried to stick with interesting but traditional materials that will fit in with the local community here, so we have wood siding and stucco, and then we have metal railings along our balconies that provide for additional interest. So referencing Design Guidelines 23 and 28 that are for varying facades and material changes in your exterior. That's all I have for you tonight, and I welcome any feedback. Thank you for having me. I also have my architect here, if you guys have any more technical questions for him.
Hang on just a second. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned that Terracina Way is private in this area?
It is. It changes on the southern end of my property from a public street to a private street.
Okay, so when you say you're dedicating 30 feet, who are you dedicating it to?
I'm not dedicating it. I'm offering an easement.
To who?
For public use.
Oh, okay, so, um, it's a little hard to tell on this, on these plans, where the right-of-way is on the south, south, at the south corner, southeast corner of this property. Can, can someone give me an idea on where the public right-of-way falls in relationship to the existing sidewalk and proposed curb?
Yeah, this is the truth. This is better than the aerial that, or the site plan that I have.
Oh, yeah, that one.
Yeah, this is kind of the configuration, because the existing sidewalk on the, the property to the south would be in this area here, and associated with this project, the new sidewalk would be in this area here. It won't line up, so ultimately, they're going to be required to kind of feather this back into the site. The engineering division, we did a pre-application meeting with the applicant. We actually did two pre-application meetings with the applicant, and the only way to, to make this condition work is to create kind of a unique transition from the property to the south, to the property, to the, to the subject property. So in fact, it'll, it won't look traditional, I guess you would say. But in doing that, there would also be a utility pole that's located in this area here as well, that would be relocated back into the site and outside of the, the right-of-way.
So, excuse me, Michael, everything north of her southerly property line is, is private? The, going up and around the utility pole that's in the, the little roundabout or up there?
I'd have to confirm that with the engineering division, but, and I can...
And is there a reason why we're not asking for a offer of dedication for public right-of-way?
Keep in mind, we, this hasn't been routed to the, the engineering division or anything like that, so we haven't done a formal plan check on this or anything like that, so.
Okay.
The applicant's been provided preliminary comments from those departments, so she's been working through that, and the next step would be going before you tonight in the early design review.
Okay.
So however, ultimately, it would be evaluated at the engineering level.
Okay. Okay, so what I, what I would like to see, to help me get clarification on this, on this little oddball connection here, is the, the public right-of-way, the westerly right-of-way and at least to the center line of the street, and then, and even some beyond to the north of this property, we, we need to see what's going on with the rest of the street to the north, south, and east of this prop, of this property. Because the property needs to work with what's existing out there and...
Certainly, we can, we'll work with engineering on that.
So the sidewalk connection, or lack of connection, is, is something that caught my eye right away, that...
Yeah, this area here, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it's...
Yeah, that's to be worked out, but in my overall design, I've, I've made accommodations for whatever that ends up being.
Okay, well, I'd like to see, see what that's proposed to actually be then, because it's a little unclear here. That's just an initial comment on that, but let me see if someone else has any comments or questions.
Any questions of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Garrison?
I have a question on parking. You have proposed 13 spaces and it's a 13 minimum. Are the spaces underneath, will they have a door? This indicates there is no door on the parking, correct?
They're not currently planned to have a door.
And so therefore, it would be obvious if somebody converted that to storage or...
Yes, that's not the intent, right.
So how, how would you ensure that? Because parking in this area, I did drive up there, and parking is a big problem now. So if we were to, if the city were to approve this and you have 13 spots, and it could really create some major problems for the neighbors on parking.
So you're asking, how, how will I prevent the parking from being converted into storage? I think the open spacing will do that. You know, I do professionally manage these, so we're by on a regular basis and we know what our residents are doing.
So you will be the manager as well?
No, I have a property manager.
Okay.
On-site?
No, he's local, though. He's not on-site.
The other concern I have is the north elevation. It's pretty plain, you know, looking, especially the, the left side of that. Or even the west elevation, it would seem to me that we could do something to make that a little more attractive for the neighbors.
Sure, we can look at ways to make that more attractive.
Because that's just plain. You got a window and nothing around it, and this whole big area that somebody's going to have to look at on a regular basis. Both the west and the north elevations. That's all I have at this point.
Commissioner Jackal?
Okay, I, I have a whole bunch of questions. Where is the parking for the existing duplex?
It's within those 13 stalls. Or you mean currently?
Currently.
Currently, it's on the southern end of the property. Currently, it sits here.
So we, we don't have 13 stalls for the new thing. We have 11 stalls for the new thing.
We have 13 stalls total.
Yeah, but, but really only 11 for the, for the new apartments. Okay, I would, I would reiterate that, that we need to be sure that the tenants do not use their parking spaces for anything but parking. And just overall, oops, it seems to me that too much of the property is paved for parking, so I don't know how we get around that. I, I totally agree. All of the walls are very blank. We need architectural details. We need a little more emphasis for the doorways or something, so that the surfaces are better articulated. It's, it's very, very bland. On the interior, I too, I'm very concerned that that den space is going to become a second bedroom in, you know, the blink of an eye. So how, how are we preventing that?
I'm really trying to just provide for flexibility for my residents. You know, some of them sleep in offs, in off cycles. Some of them work during the day and their counterpart works at night, and so I was just trying to provide for some separated living area for them to kind of separate from each other. I have some students that live in there and study at, you know, the kitchen table, so I was trying to provide for an office for them. It doesn't have a closet. It doesn't have a closable door. I don't intend to put a closable door on it.
Are you planning to rent to families with children?
I am open to renting to anyone that would like to rent.
Okay. If you're going to rent to families with children, then we need much better amenity space. You have the barbecue space, but where are the kids going to play? It's just all paved over. I guess just overall, I, I think the, the architectural designs need refining, and it really seems to me that maybe four units is a better size than eight for all that has to go on in this space. So, just my thought.
Commissioner Bill?
Thank you. For the city, what are the heights of the surrounding buildings? We're looking, it looks like west of Olive and north of Vista Village. Are there any other three-story apartments at this point in that area, within a block or two?
Not, not in that area. I think the closest would be on, on North Santa Fe.
The newer buildings?
The newer, yeah, the newer units, but within this area, no, it's typically one and two-story.
Okay. And then this area's been zoned, what is it, downtown Vista specific? So mixed use?
Yeah, that's correct.
So obviously, a choice was made at some point by the city council, by us, maybe when I wasn't here, I don't remember, to, to change this neighborhood over time, and this can be a great part of that, and I think, I, I assume... to, to change this neighborhood over time, and this can be a great part of that, and I think, I, I assume these houses are very old, they've been around for quite some time, and they need updating and better accommodations for people. So the question I have for the city is, do you have any information one way or the other as to, was this the intent of changing this zoning area to allow for this type of building? Because I, I understand the zoning is there, but in, I don't know if John or anybody, Patsy has any thing to add to that. If this is where we're going in the next 10, 20 years, then great, let's make sure we protect the surrounding residents, let's do our jobs, but I just don't, I don't have a clear picture whether that was the intent of this zoning change, or whether this is just being filled in because the requirements are there.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I've been here for a couple of years now, so I wasn't here when they originally established the specific plan, but, you know, what we've seen, you know, since I've been here, is, you know, consolidations of properties and some larger developments on the major corridors and so forth. A situation like this, it's, it's unique right now, and I think she's the first in the neighborhood to do something like this. So, I mean, the only other areas I can see, and they're not even in the specific plan, would be along east, uh, excuse me, Civic Center. We're seeing some individual property owners come in and redevelop some of the single-family homes into, you know, multi-level, uh, multiple dwelling units on, on a single lot, so you're looking at apartment buildings, condos and so forth. But in a, in a situation like this, I think this is probably the first one we've seen with a three-story product.
And maybe the follow-up question on that is, when the zoning area is established, I, I would guess it's difficult to cut off the zoning area at the two lots adjacent to Vista Village as opposed to the entire block? So, i- is there a practical or legal reason why this entire block is bumped into mixed use? I see you looking at him, it's okay, he can answer too.
Yeah, I apologize.
And I understand you may not have the answer, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but these are the questions that come to mind, is, I, I would personally like to have more information on the intent behind this area being changed, one way or the other, because I think that it does need to be upgraded and changed over time, but that's what comes to mind. And I understand I won't get that answer tonight, but I just wanted to raise the question to bring it up, so.
No, so to give you some history on why it was changed, in 2010, when we adopted the downtown specific plan, we looked at the areas around the Sprinter station, this neighborhood is directly adjacent to the Sprinter. The area, the line was drawn adjacent to the Mobile Home Park to the north and incorporated the whole single-family neighborhood. There wasn't, uh, what I would call a thorough evaluation at that time of this specific neighborhood. We reviewed the specific plan as a whole, and we made recommendations, you know, more based on the proximity to the Sprinter. There are a lot of small, single-family homes on small lots in this area. It certainly, probably merits a look if the planning commission wants us to look at that, we can go back and reevaluate it, but really, at the time, it was more of a overlay for the general area, it was covered by the old specific plan, it just didn't allow the densities that we allowed in 2010. With respect to your second question, is this what the city envisioned? I would say, we definitely envisioned some additional density because of the proximity to the transit center, but how that looks and feels and blends is really at your discretion. We're trying to fit within the zoning categories, but how it ends up is really at the discretion of the planning commission or council.
Then I'd just say, as constructive feedback, it's really difficult to be the first person to come in and make a change. I completely acknowledge that, and it's tough to disrupt a neighborhood. I, I applaud you for going forward with this and, and doing it in some form. I, I echo the concerns other people have said about the density and the number of units, the lack of parking spaces. I think in practicality, I don't know if that helps the neighborhood or helps your individual property in the long run. That's just the, the thought that comes to mind, but again, I applaud you for taking steps to go forward with this, because I know it's not easy to do that in a, a neighborhood where change hasn't happened, so.
Okay, Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Could you explain the trash room area and how the function of that is intended to work with residents and then also with pickup?
Oh, okay, so the trash room is here, so residents will walk their trash over to the bins that are collected here. And then, on trash day, Edco will wheel the trash cans out here and pick them up, and then wheel them back in here.
Okay, so those are, those are.
They're bins.
And then, what is, maybe I didn't, couldn't tell on the elevation, what is this, is that an enclosed room or just a covered room?
This one is enclosed. The trash room?
Yeah.
It's enclosed, it's on the ground floor level.
And. Okay, because how, because it looks like, I mean, so those are like a six-yard bin or something, or what's? Three yard, like a three yard or something?
Four, four yard.
Okay. Because it looks like you can't get around the first one. It looks like, I don't, I don't know if these are to scale, but how do the, how do the back three bins get around the first bin?
No, the, um, there's clearance to walk through here. This is a corridor within the bin room.
Okay, well, the dimensions look pretty tight there, but.
Yeah, we mentioned in the pre-app meeting that it would be best for her to talk to Edco and confirm this configuration would be acceptable for their, their pickup, so I'm assuming after the early design review that she would extend her hand out to Edco and, and, and confirm that.
Okay.
You've got those four bins, you've got those four bins in the parking area of the drive, because you can't stagger them, you can't take one dumpster out and put it back in, so you're going to have to take all four dumpsters out. So those are going to have to have a staging area for the trash truck to pick them up.
Yeah, well, there'll, there'll be a period of time, so I will pay Edco extra to go in there, wheel them out when the trash is there, dump them, and then put them back in, so they won't be sitting there.
I see, okay, so you're paying for an extra work by them. Okay, so on, on the impervious area that I see on sheet two of the preliminary grading plan, you might have a second look at that, it says, impervious area replaced at zero, and I, I know that's not right.
That's probably a typo, we, we will be adding additional impervious area. I foresee that we will be adding additional impervious area on the drive. And then, um, obviously, all my landscape is, I'm sorry. We will be adding pervious area, so my plan is for the majority of the impervious area that I remove, it will most likely end up being pervious, in order to comply with stormwater regulations.
Yeah, but I think if you're. If you're replacing, in a project like this, if you're replacing, um, impervious, even with, with, if it's being replaced, impervious, it's, I would caution you to double-check and see what you're getting triggered.
You're correct, I probably need to take a second look at that.
Yeah, I have a feeling it's, it's going to trigger some treatment requirements, and you may not have accounted any room for that. So, I wouldn't want you to get too far down the road and then find out about that later.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Looney?
A couple of points. I think a reevaluation of the bulk and the mass needs to be done. Three stories, there's no three-story structures nearby. I know you're trying to maximize the living units to make the cash flow work. I think it could be articulated better with that three-story building, where you've got three-story walls that are flat somewhat, there's not a lot of delineation on that, so. But the bulk and mass need to be looked at. The second item is lot coverage.
Are we, we're, we're in the process of asking her questions right now, okay?
Okay.
I, if you're, we're going to get to the point where we give her our input, but we've still got people, speakers that want to come and address us.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
That's what I'm here for.
Thank you.
We do have a request to speak from, I believe it's Amy Reed and Karen Kleinmore? Okay. Name and address for our record, please.
Name is Catherine Klemic, address is 155 Camino Patricia, Vista, California, 92083. And I am, we are the west side of this property, so this, the western, the west elevation that you, Commissioner Garrison, talked about, that is our view, that is what we will see. And I want to thank you all for having an opportunity for us to come in and speak and hear what the plan is before this changes over our fence line, so we definitely appreciate this opportunity. And I want to start out by saying, we're not necessarily against this, but we have a lot of questions. I'm happy to hear many of our own questions voiced by all of you, so I very much appreciate that. Definitely, the view shed from the west is a big issue, the privacy, the impacts, those are issues that we have. Commissioner Jackal, you brought up children, you've brought up the pavers, you've brought up the amount of cement that's going to be added, that brings a lot of noise to the area. So, we are a small, you know, single-family home on that side, in this single-family area, and that's one of the reasons that we purchased the property, and so this is changing that landscape significantly. So, Ms. Reed, Amy Reed is my wife and has some additional comments and questions, and I'll give the mic over to her, but like I said, we're not necessarily against it, but we would like to see some additional information before we freak out.
So, as Karen said, we're married, and, and so privacy is of utmost importance to us. And so a three-story building going in our backyard that looks down on our property is huge. We want to make sure that this project protects the privacy of the single-family homes in the area, not just ours, but there are others that this would impact. We've had issues with that particular property pretty much the entire time we've owned it, the property adjacent. They have concert-level parties regularly, we get trash over the fence line. Our palm tree and fence have been melted or damaged by those renters.
Barbecue's too close to the fence line.
Barbecue being too close, and, so we have concerns when the property managers are saying, we're there all the time, we know what they do. The most recent concert was on October 22nd, two weeks ago. And it was so loud that our neighbor across the street was able to take audio/video of it, and it sounds like, I mean, you wouldn't want it anywhere near your property. And this was on the other side of our property, across the street. We've had to call the sheriff numerous times, we've, so, and our neighbors, not many.
It's, it's considerable noise already existing with just the four units that are currently on the property, so now we're talking about increasing capacity to potentially 10 units.
Yeah.
I don't know what that does as far as the size, I don't know what the duplex capacity currently is, that's one of the questions that we would have, you know, is, are, what is the capacity now that's going to be carrying on this property versus what's there currently? And what kind of, you know, regulation is, is going to be in place? And who, other than Noise Commission, who we've, in all of the neighborhood, have all been calling regularly, who else would we need to be contacting? Or is there something that in the planning process, we can work this out to a place where it protects our privacy, accounts for noise, accounts for all these issues? And, you know, this is an early development, so, we understand that, but we wanted to voice all those concerns.
We hope to see some changes that help better address those kinds of issues. And, you know, privacy screening vegetation could help with some of the things on this, on the western side, opaque windows on the western side, a wall that blocks those balconies on the western side. Those things could help us a lot.
Right.
So we did see some potential options.
I would point out to you, Michael, can we go back to the elevations? The west elevation in several of the commissioners' comments have been rather plain.
Yes.
But there are no, there are two, maybe bathroom windows there, so, and it's a two-story element at that point.
Right, so, and that was, this is the first time we'd had a chance to see them was when we were walking in, so that was good that there was just the two windows, but again, if we could say, okay, those must be opaque for the life of the property, and those balconies, which would literally be looking on, into our yard, you're set back about 10 feet there from our yard, you know, can we close that from looking into our space? There's a, like I said, there's ways that we could work through this, or plant vegetative screening, that would assist with the noise as well as some of the hardscaping issues as well.
Which we've already invested in that on our side to try to deal with some of the noise issues, but it's not helping because it's so.
The noise issues really aren't part of this process right now?
It's, but when you're increasing.
But it could be mitigated by the planning.
You're increasing the density of the people that are there, and if you're talking about so much concrete and the way that the, the walls are funneling and whatnot, you know, with just a, right now, it's a chain-link fence, if that's all that continues to remain there.
Okay.
We get noise issues from that other apartment complex that's adjacent to it, so, it's, these are the concerns that we have.
Okay, understand.
And through the planning, screening, those things can, can assist that, and now's the time to have the conversations, and I hope to meet with Ms. Cooper outside sometime and have a conversation. So, again, want to thank you guys for the opportunity, gentlemen and ladies, for letting us speak.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the public portion of our, our item. Commissioner Garrison, did you want to lead off the discussion?
Yeah, just, just a question about the street. Are there sidewalks here on this street at all, all the way down to the?
Yeah, and, and we mentioned it before, and if I can maybe get to the, the aerial here, you can see, hopefully. Actually, I don't think you can see it, but I, the property just to the south, going down Terracina on the west side of the street, I know there's sidewalks on that side. I can't guarantee there's continuous sidewalks going all the way down Terracina, though.
Well, that, that becomes very important, because there's no place for the kids to play, if there are kids here. And you, they have a long ways to go in order to get to something, and they have to get down that street. And I assume there's some sort of a stormwater drainage? This, all the water from above isn't going to go right down in the middle of the street, is it?
Again, at this point, the engineering department, we haven't even looked at this project yet, so, yeah, it hasn't been evaluated, unfortunately.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, shall we move on then and provide our input on the, the various elements of the early design review? First would be the site plan and circulation. Any comments on the site plan and circulation? Commissioner Looney?
On the site plan, I think the lot coverage is somewhat excessive, and then for staff, like, sorry. Question for staff. On the western edge of the property, it's designated on sheet two of the grading plan as open space. Is that open space typically landscaped? Or does the developer have an opportunity to do other things with that space?
I think they're designated open space right now on the plan, but they have ability to put other amenities or improvements within that area, if, if the planning commission chooses to, to consider that or suggest that as well, or, I, the neighbor was talking about potentially having a landscape separation back there, so I'm not sure what direction the, the developer will take. You know, she can come back up and give you an idea of what her vision of that area would be, if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
My vision was open space planting. I haven't gotten into the full details of that yet, I'm completely open to some kind of screening back there for the adjacent neighbors, you know, whatever works within the folds of the community is really what I'm looking to do.
Okay.
It is within the setback, so I don't intend to put any additional structures there, because it is within the setback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And my problem, my issues with the site plan and circulation deal with the public improvements out on the street. This is one of our really oldest neighborhoods in the city. I, I, it really needs to have a comprehensive plan, a street improvement plan done for the entire cul-de-sac, but I, I doubt that there's money to do that, so I'm going to be interested to see what, what happens. I would like to see the street fully improved.
Yeah, I guess, one thing to keep in mind, the, the project won't be going before the planning commission, so unless you specifically ask staff to provide you that information before it goes to the zoning administrator, we can do so. I know in previous smaller projects, I know Commissioner Jackal was concerned with landscaping on another project, and as soon as that project is deemed complete, we can show you those improvement plans. So, if it's your intentions, we can, we can show you those improvement plans as well prior to it going before the zoning administrator.
Okay, very good. Any other comments on site plan or, or circulation? All right, how about architecture, the building elevations? Commissioner Looney, and followed by Commissioner Carroll?
Again, as I mentioned earlier, just the bulk and mass. Again, as I mentioned earlier, just the bulk and mass of the architecture, particularly the three-story elements and the somewhat blank walls. Also have a concern about the positioning of the existing and the proposed structure. From wall to wall, we've got 10 feet of space. We've got a five-foot balcony proposed on the south side, which will place that balcony of the second floor about two and a half to three feet away from the roof of the existing With this, with the new building height, two and a half to three feet between the structure and the roof overhang, for a five- or six-year-old young boy, he's going to be excited about jumping over the rail of the balcony and getting on the roof of the other structure. So I think that might want to be articulated a little differently. And that was all for the building.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So on this particular topic, is that including floor pan, floor plan?
I was going to go there next.
Okay, then I will just stick with the exterior architecture. Is that, yeah, it's too plain, it's too, even the, even the north elevation needs some more window treatments or something, or pop-outs, some inundations. It is slightly broken up on the south elevation in the drawing, I think, just from the railings of the balconies, but really, those are not super attractive. And, you know, I don't know what else to do there, but the, definitely the north elevation is lacking, in my opinion.
I would tend to agree. I thought that the, at least the west elevation needed additional materials, that if I understand the plan right, all the wood is in the, in the back, so I would, I would think that they would want some additional wood treatment. There's not a lot of finessration, breakup of the walls, although the, the west elevation, the ground floor does stick out the width of the balcony, so that's somewhat, a little bit deceiving. But the back elevation on the west side is fairly flat and straight, although there is a two-story element there. So I think you need to work on breaking up the wall mass and both vertically and horizontally. And then I did have a question for you on the reno. When you renovate the duplex, you're going to match architectural styles?
Yes, we're open to that.
Okay. And the, I was out there today, and I can't remember, what, does the duplex have a hip roof or a gable roof?
It has a pitched roof.
Gable.
Gable, thank you. I'm an engineer, not an architect.
Okay, and the proposed structure has a gable roof also. Okay, as long as they match.
That was our intent, yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, let's go on and discuss floor plans. Commissioner Jackal?
I really had my say on all of these points, and I just, the reason I'm not saying more is I don't want to take up your time.
Okay.
I've already said.
All right. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So the den slash bedroom, I have, you know, great concerns about that being another, another bedroom. Yeah, I understand there's no closets or doors proposed, but I don't know how code treats this, but realistically, you know, that's going to house, that's going to house more than one bedrooms for the people in there. And in at least half of those units, I've gassed just, so, and of course, then, then the parking, that triggers the parking issues. So my question, I guess, Mr. Ressler, is what's, what's the parking standard for a two-bedroom unit in this mixed use?
So for two-bedroom units, you're looking at 2.25 parking spaces per unit? So that increases by one parking space per unit?
So I didn't bring my scale with me, so I don't really, I can kind of tell what the size of that den is, but the applicant mentioned that some of these bedrooms were, was it the bedrooms or the unit sizes that were going to be increasing?
The unit sizes, specifically the units on the west side are 550 to 600 square feet, so they don't meet your minimum 700 square feet.
I don't know what to do about the dens, but I'm very concerned about the dens.
I know in previous projects, the planning commission suggested to the applicants to make sure that the openings between that den area and the common area gets opened up even further, potentially preventing them from enclosing it and so forth, so that might be a suggestion. I don't know what's the program of the room adjacent to it, but I think trying to create that openness between that area and the rest of the floor plan would probably make it a little bit more conducive to it being a den and not being converted to a bedroom.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't have a high comfort level with it not becoming a bedroom, so if there was, if there was some sort of a change in the floor plan, that could open that up more, like if that bathroom, you know, was turned 90 degrees or something to, so that the, so that the den is not three walls but two, or something like that, I, or, you know, I don't know. I'm, like I said, I don't know what to do about it, but I just wanted to voice my concern.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Looney?
Just one suggestion on that, on the south wall, where we have that stairwell, the floor plan shows a solid wall, but to help the articulation, that wall could be removed, and I think that's going to enable you to get a better level of light and shadows. And also, it's going to open that stairwell up a lot nicer rather than having a dark two-story space.
Okay. I, too, am concerned about the den. It's been a pet peeve of mine since I've been on the commission, so the more you can do to open that up, the better I think you'll find the reception at the city. We have had dens that have been converted to bedrooms, and then we have a parking problem. So it's, and it's something that we've seen throughout the city. So it's, it's kind of a major concern to the commission. So you're going to go to the zoning administrator to get this approved, and so we, you probably won't see us again if everything goes well. So anyway, that did it for floor plans. How about open space and landscaping? Any comments? Any additional comments? Commissioner Looney?
Just one comment on the landscaping. On the north side of the property line, we have a five-foot retaining wall. That five-foot retaining wall is going to require about a three-foot footing that comes towards your building, which doesn't really accommodate for three to six inches of dirt. That, not much will grow in that. So just the logistics of retaining walls and footings, you may want to try to be more creative in how that's addressed because you'll get some weeds to grow, but anything of any substantial growth won't happen, so.
Very good. All right. That concludes, student commissioners, any comments on, that you'd like to provide for us? No? Okay, very good. I remembered tonight. Thank you. Okay, any questions from Ms. Cooper back to the commission? Are you, you understand the input the commission's given you tonight?
I do. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, very good. All right. That concludes our public items tonight. We have students from Rancho here. Okay, give us about five minutes. We have to sum up here, and we'll sign your forms then. So Commissioner Conley? Or Chairman, or Commissioner Conley?
Good grief.
Thank you.
Community Development Director Conley.
Just a couple of updates for the commission. We will be having our next meeting on October 17th. We have one project, an annexation, that'll be coming before the commission that evening for a public hearing. We will also have a meeting, it looks like, on November 7th, which will have a site development plan, most likely for the Monarch Development over on the old Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park. Following the November 7th meeting, we will not have a meeting for the Thanksgiving holiday, and we will also not have a meeting, a second meeting in December due to Christmas, so the early November and December meetings might have a few agendas on, a few items on the agenda. But you can plan for the late meetings to be canceled in those months. Development issues, worth noting, the East Vista Way, Williamson Gas Station, Union 76 is finally being demolished. There's a gas station that's going on that site that came before the commission last year, so we're happy to see that project move forward and remove another vacant commercial building. And then finally, the city council approved or is looking into the appointment process for all of the commissions and committees, which will affect the way the planning commissioners are appointed. The decision was made that the council members will each individually make recommendations on planning commission appointments as they become vacant, and that will start with the most senior council member, which right now is the mayor, and then move down in seniority. The next appointment on the planning commission will be next summer. That doesn't mean that the council member is appointing someone specifically, they're simply making their own recommendation. The recommendations still go to the city council, and there is still a full vote on who is appointed to the commission, so it won't change that process. But the recommendations have historically come from the mayor, and they're voted on by the council, and now the recommendations will come from each individual council member. This was really in response to the districting, although the policy has so far not been that the council member has to select someone from within their district. It can still be a citywide appointment, but that council member will have a choice. And I think that kind of covers the main components of it. There's still some details that are being worked out, which will go back to the council in a codified manner for their action in the future, and I'll report back to you when it's all sort of final, but just to give you kind of a heads up on the changes to the appointment process. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. I would like to hear from our student commissioners, since we're kind of early tonight. Could you come and tell us where you go to school, what year you are, and a little bit about yourself? Could you do that for us this evening? Make an introduction?
Hello, I'm Jonah Cranford. This is my second year participating as a student commissioner. I go to Castle Academy High School. It's in Escondido, but I live here in Vista. A little about myself, I'm, I actually interned at the finance department here at the city. And so I really enjoyed that experience and got to meet great people, and yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'm Emmanuel Martinez from Rancho Winemis. Oh, I apologize for the attire. I didn't think I was going to be speaking in front of you guys, but, so I'm sorry. But yeah, I go to Rancho, I'm a senior, and I'm currently in the marching band, but it's not that big of a deal. I think everyone does something. And I guess I'm trying to get as involved in the community, and hopefully, like, that helps me in attending, like, a UC or something. My ultimate goal would be going to a UCF. I guess, becoming an engineer of some sort, but yeah.
Don't do it.
Thank you.
Don't. I'm sorry. I'm a retired planner, and I've worked with engineers my whole life, so, so, anyway.
So you don't like engineers?
About as much as I do architects, but that's all right. Thank you very much. And again, if we're going through this public hearing process, and we get to the end and I forget to call on you, raise your hand if you have a comment, you want, you want to express a concern or, or give us your input. We want to hear that, and I have, I get excited about getting an item over and forget sometimes. So raise your hand and let me know. Okay, commissioners, anything else? All right, then we stand adjourned until October 17th.